Hi, evening. Welcome to the March 4th, 24th, 30th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, 31th, 32th, 33rd, 34th, 35th, 36th, 37th, 38th, 39th, 40th, 41th, 42th, 43rd, 44th, 45th, 46th, 47th, 48th, 49th, 50th, 51th, 52th, 53th, 54th, 55th, 56th, 57th, 58th, 59th, 60th, 61th, 62th, 63rd, 64th, 65th, 66th, 67th, 68th, 69th, 70th, 71th, 72th, 73th, 74th, 75th, 76th, 77th, 78th, 79th, 80th, 81th, 82th, 83rd, 84th, 85th, 86th, 87th, 88th, 89th, 90th, 91th, 92th, 93rd, 94th, 95th, 96th, 97th, 98th, 99th, 100th, 101th, 102th, 103rd, 104th, 105th, 106th, 107th, 108th, 109th, 110th, 112th, 113th, 114th, 115th, 116th, 117th, 118th, 119th, 120th, 121th, 122th, 123rd, 124th, 125th, 126th, 130th, 131th, 132th, 133rd, 134th, 135th, 136th, 137th, 138th, 139th, 140th, 141th, 142th, 143rd, 145th, 146th, 147th, 148th, 149th, 150th, 151th, 152th, 153rd, 154th, 155th, 156th, 157th, 158th, 159th, 160th, 161th, 162th, 163rd, 164th, 165th, 166th, 167th, 168th, 169th, 170th, 171th, 172th, 173rd, 174th, 175th, 176th, 177th, 178th, 179th, 180th, 181th, 182th, 183rd, 184th, 185th, 186th, 185th, 186th, 187th, 188th, 189th, 190th, 191th, 192th, 193rd, 194th, 195th, 196th, 197th, 198th, 199th, 200th, 201th, 202th, 203rd, 204th, 205th, 206th, 207th, 208th, 209th, 210th, 211th, 212th, 215th, 216th, 217th, 218th, 219th, 220th, 221th, 222th, 223rd, 224th, 225th, 226th, 227th, 228th, 229th, 230th, 231th, 232th, 233rd, 234th, 235th, 236th, 237th, 238th, 239th, 240th, 241th, 242th, 243rd, 244th, 245th, 246th, 247th, 248th, 249th, 250th, 251th, 252th, 253rd, 254th, 255th, 256th, 257th, 258th, 259th, 260th, 261th, 262th, 263rd, 264th, 265th, 266th, 267th, 268th, 269th, 270th, 271th, 272th, 273rd, 274th, 275th, 276th, 277th, 278th, 279th, 280th, 281th, 282th, 282th, 283rd, 284th, 285th, 286th, 287th, 288th, 289th, 290th, 291th, 292th, 293rd, 294th, 295th, 296th, 297th, 298th, 299th, 300th, 301th, 302th, 303rd, 304th, 305th, 306th, 307th, 308th, 309th, 310th, 311th, 312th, 313th, 314th, 315th, 316th, 317th, 318th, 319th, 320th, 321th, 322th, 323rd, 324th, 325th, 326th, 327th, 328th, 329th, 330th, 331th, 332th, 333rd, 334th, 335th, 336th, 337th, 338th, 339th, 340th, 341th, 342th, 343rd, 344th, 345th, 346th, 347th, 348th, 349th, 350th, 351th, 352th, 353rd, 354th, 355th, 356th, 357th, 358th, 359th, 360th, 361th, 362th, 362th, 363rd, 364th, 365th, 366th, 367th, 368th, 369th, 370th, 371th, 372th, 373rd, 374th, 375th, 373rd, 374th, 375th, 376th, 377th, 378th, 379th, 380th, 381th, 382th, 383rd, 384th, 385th, 384th, 385th, 386th, 387th, 388th, 389th, 390th, 391th, 392th, 393rd, 394th, 395th, 396th, 393rd, 394th, 395th, 396th, 397th, 398th, 399th, 400th, 401th, 402th, 403rd, 404th, 405th, 403rd, 404th, 405th, 406th, 407th, 408th, 409th, 410th, 411th, 412th, 413rd, 414th, 415th, 414th, 415th, 416th, 417th, 418th, 419th, 420th, 421th, 422th, 423rd, 424th, 425th, 426th, 424th, 425th, 426th, 427th, 428th, 429th, 430th, 431th, 432th, 433rd, 434th, 435th, 436th, 434th, 435th, 436th, 437th, 438th, 439th, 440th, 441th, 442th, 443rd, 444th, 445th, 446th, 444th, 445th, 446th, 447th, 448th, 449th, 450th, 451th, 452th, 453rd, 454th, 455th, 456th, 454th, 455th, 456th, 457th, 458th, 459th, 460th, 461th, 462th, 463rd, 464th, 465th, 466th, 464th, 465th, 466th, 467th, 468th, 469th, 470th, 471th, 472th, 473rd, 474th, 475th, 476th, 474th, 475th, 476th, 477th, 478th, 479th, 480th, 481th, 482th, 483rd, 484th, 485th, 486th, 484th, 485th, 486th, 487th, 488th, 489th, 490th, 491th, 492th, 493rd, 494th, 495th, 496th, 494th, 495th, 496th, 497th, 498th, 499th, 500th, 501th, 502th, 503rd, 504th, 505th, 506th, 504th, 505th, 506th, 507th, 508th, 509th, 510th, 511th, 512th, 513rd, 514th, 515th, 516th, 514th, 515th, 516th, 517th, 518th, 519th, 520th, 521th, 522th, 523rd, 524th, 525th, 526th, 524th, 525th, 526th, 527th, 528th, 529th, 530th, 531th, 532th, 533rd, 534th, 535th, 536th, 534th, 535th, 536th, 537th, 538th, 539th, 540th, 541th, 542th, 543rd, 544th, 545th, 546th, 544th, 545th, 546th, 547th, 548th, 549th, 550th, 551th, 552th, 553rd, 554th, 555th, 556th, 554th, 555th, 556th, 557th, 558th, 559th, 560th, 561th, 562th, 563rd, 564th, 565th, 566th, 564th, 565th, 566th, 567th, 568th, 569th, 570th, 571th, 572th, 573rd, 574th, 575th, 576th, 574th, 575th, 576th, 577th, 578th, 579th, 580th, 581th, 582th, 583rd, 584th, 585th, 586th, 584th, 585th, 586th, 587th, 588th, 589th, 590th, 591th, 592th, 593rd, 594th, 595th, 596th, 604th, 605th, 606th, 607th, 608th, 609th, 610th, 611th, 612th, 613rd, 614th, 615th, 616th, 614th, 615th, 616th, 617th, 618th, 619th, 620th, 621th, 622th, 623rd, 624th, 625th, 626th, 624th, 625th, 626th, 627th, 628th, 629th, 630th, 631th, 632th, 633rd, 634th, 635th, 636th, 634th, 635th, 636th, 637th, 638th, 639th, 640th, 641th, 642th, 643rd, 644th, 645th, 646th, 644th, 635th, 646th, 647th, 648th, 649th, 650th, 651th, 652th, 653rd, 654th, 655th, 656th, 654th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th, 664th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663rd, 664th, 665th, 666th,
Would a separate standalone server solve that problem? Or am I barking up the wrong tree?
You're not barking up the wrong tree, but you're missing the point. OBS is running on a laptop or a PC in the back room.
So all we need is an internet connection and a PC and we could make this work.
If you want somebody to control this meeting remotely without sitting in this building, yes. If you're that nervous that you can't understand how a VPN is going to prevent that from happening, and your network administrator should be able to help you with that, then the next choice is to record the meetings if somebody's going to come physically to this building and sit in the back room.
Okay, that would be the solve would be to have them physically here as opposed to remotely.
Right.
Okay.
The idea was not to force somebody to go to the BMU facility, to go to a building to record a meeting when with a secure connection, they could record it from their home. And you would probably eliminate some of the issues with staffing. As I shared with BPA previously, yes, you're going to pay somebody, but you're also going to pay a third party, so you're paying somebody. Maybe the alternative would be a shuffle of hours that weeks that you have BPA and council meetings, that that employee covers those two meetings and they get Friday afternoon off. So you're not paying overtime or an exorbitant amount of money.
Yeah, that I guess in my mind, that's the concern that I have or the question, I guess more than anything is when you start paying somebody to do something, then you start looking at benefits and all these other things that come into play that, you know, we would have to look at before we would be able to convince somebody.
Or having a backup person for that, right?
Yeah, right.
Like even when I leave town, we have a council president that is my backup. I mean, it's the same for anything if you have someone specialized. And I think just one bill, like for transparency, this is a potential business you're looking to open, correct?
No, I'm not.
Well, you did say that.
I said that if you are looking for a third party.
Yes.
That I could probably connect you up with guaranteed help.
Okay.
I'm not really wanting to do this. I retired on December 31st.
You want to be retired?
I'm kind of liking retirement, like some of the others I heard this evening.
I don't know yet.
But at this point, if it comes down to that you can't find anybody, there's a way to work around that, too. I'm not looking to be a BMU or a City of Brian employee, far from it.
I know when we were talking about this before, the biggest concern I think that we had was not necessarily the cost of the equipment, but rather personnel. And I understand what you're saying. I agree to a certain extent that yes, I think that, you know, the transparency of having video, some people I've talked to in the past, they liked having that video that they could fall back on if they wanted to. But yeah, the personnel piece is the biggest question, I think. How do we man that or how do we get somebody to do that?
Well, and once again, maybe it comes down to that it's not really a, I'll call it communications department person. As I said earlier, OBS runs on a laptop or a desktop and you just have to be somewhat computer literate. Yeah, we can change, train you.
Age of Tom or entire.
But it's not that difficult. And once again, it's, I think the city needs to back up. The reason that it was voted the way it was, from what I heard, was it was cost prohibitive. We've now taken the cost prohibitive out of it. Now we're adding into something else.
Goals actually cost benefit.
Yeah. How many people watched it versus?
Not all the way there. It's cost, not being argumented, not being factual.
That's right.
Go back and look it up.
Seventy-five.
Which I'm sure you will. The cost benefit was the issue. The issue was how many folks, which you brought up and no one answered because it was your five minutes and we don't try and get into that with the people having their time. But what we had heard was X number of people were involved on the site that was looking at this. And for that, it was going to be X number of dollars, which was substantial. You're right. It seems like it was forty or fifty. But then beyond that, there was a cost of operation, which is what's being talked. So it was getting considerably up there for, let's just say, a hundred folks. I know some are more, some are less, but a hundred some folks. Is that the best use for the money? So it was a cost benefit issue. And just one last thing. I asked, because actually about two years ago, an individual that was blind asked me, you know, they would really, it's hard for them to get here, stuff you mentioned before, it's hard for them to get here. And they couldn't really make out the audio real well, but it helped to kind of see, not see, excuse me, hear, what he could hear. And so I talked to another person, actually, they talked to me, she came up to me. And I asked, and they were visually impaired, actually totally blind, and said that, I said, when you listen, can you hear? They said, yes, it's not a problem, it's fine. So I think it does vary, but that doesn't mean you're not telling the truth, you are. Some people, it's hard to pick up. Some people are saying that it's not. So the issue becomes one to me is still a cost benefit. And that's why I was asking if they have, if there's a proposal that was given, I don't need you to do the same thing you already did. But what I'd like to have is a response to that in this particular case apparently, perhaps from BPA or whatever, saying this is what's being proposed. These are the potential downsides to this. And I think that's what I'm hearing from pretty much everybody here. And so that we can look at that and reevaluate it. But the but to it is, is that it probably is going to get down to cost benefit. And now it sounds like potential security issues, which I think is, it sounds like you've got some ways to deal with that, which is good. But I think it's a cost benefit and now I'm going to throw in security issues to make sure that that occurs. But I appreciate the information. And I do, and it's not a political statement, because I care less about the politics of it. The issue to me is, and it's what we struggled with a year ago, when we met two or three times jointly, was how can we make this work? Because we want to be as transparent. Am I wrong here? You can tell me. We want to be transparent as possible, which means the video helps that along for those who don't have a good audio connection with that. So that's not, we're all on the same page there, all. There's no one here trying to hide anything, as I mentioned, there's minutes. There's the audio portion, you can come here. But as you pointed out, that's not always a good avenue, any of those three, for most people. So that was what the struggle was, it was cost benefit, now security given. What can we do to make this work so that people have as much access to what we do as possible?
Well, your cost to YouTube is nothing. So when you're saying there's cost to publish it and stuff, there's no cost to YouTube. It's a time for somebody to upload it once they have the formatted file. OBS records it. If you would have an interruption, it records and grabs everything up to that point. It doesn't put it into a buffer. And in order to make it publishable from YouTube, there's a little utility that does a conversion to an MP4 and you push a button and it converts it. So once again, you're back to the labor portion of it. And you have a department that, you're not toppling apples and apples and apples when you compare it to the electrical and the water department, because there's no buffer there. With the other departments, when you have a vacant building, there's minimal charges, there's things like that to subsidize, things that you're not getting from the utility on the communication side. So you can't really put a, in my opinion, an accounting and say, well, communications isn't profitable because they only have so many subscribers, a thousand sixty, I think, is what I heard. And at this point, if you don't support that department, you're not going to have those thousand sixty either. And so you're going to then lose that. And I'm not sure how the network administrator falls in under the BPA, probably because of the communications. But if you don't have that, where is BPA being refunded for all the services they're providing to all the other, I'll call it, computers within the network that, you know, we're floating along and we're saying, well, BPA is not making any money? Well, they're not, because they're providing all these free services that they're not getting reimbursed for.
Well, I appreciate the information. I think we probably need to move on, but the last question, thank you. But the last question is, since you've been on both sides of this, you and the mayor, is it, I'm sorry, is it possible for you to say, we have looked at this, we have looked at that, these are the problems with that?
Yeah, we've discussed all these things.
Yeah, is it possible to have that and like maybe send to the mayor? Is that dual?
Yeah.
Is that dual? Because I think that would be helpful, too.
And I think one of the things, too, was that we discussed jointly between council and BMU was the viewership. There just wasn't that many people.
That was the, that's exactly what I meant. It was a cost benefit issue.
Correct.
Yeah. And now there's security issues. But if those had already been a proposal, I'd like to know kind of what both sides of that. So that would be helpful, you know, nothing. Once again, I'm just telling, Mr. Metz there, yeah. I'm fairly intelligent, you know, a summary works for me. Would that work? Yeah, absolutely.
That would be great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number four, the resolution, John, will you please number read?
Resolution number sixteen, twenty twenty-four. A resolution to accept a $134,000 grant from Bryan Area Foundation to the Parks and Recreation Department for the Lincoln Park Restrooms.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ben.
Well, I'm in front of you. You guys have a donation from the Bryan Area Foundation for $134,000. Again, this is not just from the foundation. The foundation was the body that held the money. So there's a lot of people that have made donations for this $134,000 that will go towards the Lincoln Park Restrooms.
Will that do it then or?
We're going to award the bid here in a minute. I think the bid was 153, but we did have some money in our budget. We had built into our capital budget some money. So yes, the money will be there.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number five is an ordinance, John, will you please number read?
Ordinance number six, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Brian for the month ending March 31st, twenty twenty-four. So each year, council authorizes a series of transfers between funds. And this is the first ordinance of the year that addresses that. So it's a portion of what's been budgeted for moving money from the 1% tax fund, income tax fund, to the general and the streets funds. And then there's a very small piece in here that will be the final piece we need to clean up that Safe Routes to School project that we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Item number six is an ordinance, will you please number read, Ken?
Ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Brian for the fiscal year ending December 31st, twenty twenty-four, and declaring an emergency. The lone item in this amended appropriation is to authorize the expenditure of the $134,000 donation that Mr. Dominic just spoke about.
I'll move to suspend.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Rick's fine.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Item number seven is an ordinance, John, will you please number read?
Ordinance number eight, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sebenhaller Instruction Construction Company for the project known as Lincoln Park Restroom Facility.
As you remember, about two months ago, we received bids and I came to you and rejected the bids, asked you to reject them because it came in cost prohibitive, let's just say. So we trimmed a few items out of it, made a few cuts and made it more affordable. And as you can see, the bid came in at 155, 225, which was only about $21,000 short or over, excuse me, what Ben had received as grants. So with that, I would request you to suspend the rules and approve this so we can get shop drawings approved and have the contractor order materials.
Out of curiosity, what was, just pick one or two.
We lowered the building height from 10 foot to eight foot.
Okay.
Made the ceiling a little shorter.
All right.
So that was, and I think the flooring, we took the vinyl flooring out and just left it sealed concrete. So small things.
You're concrete anyway, but that's.
Right. And the time of year also, it's a little bit later now. So I pushed the completion date a little later so they don't have to do frost protection on their concrete. So timing helped as well. We were trying to get it done and get it usable. So it saved a little bit by timing as well. But I'm happy, so.
Good.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
He's happy on that.
And Mary.
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number eight, the resolution, John, will you please number read?
Resolution number seventeen, twenty twenty-four. A resolution to approve the final plan for the countywide 911 system in Williams County, Ohio.
Council, you have been presented with this plan. On that committee is not just the people that were listed, which is Commissioner Hillkurt, myself, Senator Township Trustee Matt Groob, Mill Creek Township Trustee Bob Short, Eden Mayor Dwayne Thiel, and County Auditor Vicki Grimm. But also the administrative staff from EMA, Central Communications, and Bryan Police and Fire and Dispatch have been meeting for the last several months to get this comprehensive plan put together for the county. The reason that this was required is because the state has changed the Ohio Revised Code establishments for our dispatcher centers. There are a few things that each of us will need to do to come into full compliance over the next few years. They will not be difficult for us to do as far as the City of Brian goes. But the state is requiring that each township and community and commissioners pass a resolution in support to approve this plan in order to, again, start that compliance process. So we are asking for your approval. This plan has been put together by myself, Chief Poole, Captain Mendez, Chief Ruski, Kristy Moore, and Alex Smith as far as our dispatch goes. And again, we've worked very cooperatively with County Central Communications and EMA on that. So if you have any questions, now would be the time to ask, but I would.
I do.
Yeah, okay.
And they're very elementary and.
I hope so, because otherwise I'm going to have to have, you know, Chief Poole come up.
Yeah, no, it's, they're certainly not in depth, more than they are conceptual. On page seven, it talks about cellular 911 calls from all of Williams County.
Yeah.
Landline 911 calls from all of Williams County excluding the City of Brian.
That's correct.
I'm just curious as to what.
So that is a state code issue. If you look at your Verizon bill, you pay a little month or T-Mobile or whatever you have for 911. All those funds go to the county. Now, that may change with Next Gen, but we are not able, as our dispatch, to take 911 cell calls. So they come and get rerouted from Central into the city. Do you have something to add? You looked like you did. Go ahead and get to the microphone, Chief. Let's see if I got an A minus or a F on that answer.
A minus there.
All right. I'll take it.
There are a lot of technical changes that are going with the Next Gen 911. The system right now basically works like the old telephone system where it all goes into the central hub, it figures out where it came from and then kicks it back out. The cell calls come in, they know they're cell calls, they route all cell calls to Central currently. So they can tell where those landlines are because they have a physical address located to them and the switch knows where they came from, so they can divide inside the city, outside of the city. The new system changes from working through that centralized switch. It goes to a geographic location. So this is something that's probably going to change on down the line. And the state's very much trying to do that. Basically, they draw a box on the map, the computer figures out where the call came from, whether it's cell call or landline, and it says which dispatch it should go to. So there's changes that are coming. But currently, the system that we have right now and the way that everything functions here, landlines, they know they're inside the city limits, they're going to our dispatch. And cell calls, without being able to distinguish, are all routed through Central.
Because they're bouncing off different towers.
Yes.
So you don't, like Andy at Mayberry, we don't just do this.
Yeah, it's not like way back when the fire department number was two.
All right, I got it, thank you. Appreciate it. And then I have, I think, just on page sixteen, I didn't, I'm not sure I understood the cost breakout under the Bryan Police Department.
Yeah. So if I miss any of this, let me know, but that is obviously wages for dispatch between police and fire benefits package. But also, we put in the mark system in the consoles during that timeframe. So that is some of the cost. Is that correct? Look, I got an A plus on that one. Thanks, Chief. Yeah. So that is why it's high.
Last two years.
Yes, that's why it's so high, because we started that process during 2020, 2021 and finished in 2022, so.
Got eleven, last one.
Yep.
Page twenty-two.
I'm glad you're giving me page numbers, Mr. Betts, thank you.
Yeah, well, if I'm nothing, I'm organized.
Yeah, the PSAP. That's pronounced PSAP, that acronym.
Yeah, yeah.
And the reason that we're not, and this one is a couple of things. Some of it involves the training that our dispatchers will need to take to become, is it for medical?
Correct.
And what was the other thing? There was another.
We had to have the certification training.
Yeah.
Meant specific criteria rather than the general training that we're doing for dispatch.
So Alex Smith, who is our records clerk, but also somewhat, I mean, she supervises the dispatchers. She's going to get trained in those and then be able to train our dispatchers.
Is that a cost to the city?
There'll be some training costs, yes, but they won't be any more than our ordinary training.
I wasn't sure.
Right. So the reason that Central already has that is because all of their dispatchers are trained immediately on those two things. Because they're also taking EMS calls and we weren't. And under this new system, it's potential that we will. So we want to make sure that we're in compliance for that.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So again, if we could go through this resolution and adopt it, I would be very grateful to send over to the county.
Since I took all the time, does anybody have any more questions? I'll move to suspend. Don't look at me and frown like a dirty dog.
They were good questions, John.
I'll second.
Thank you.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Item number nine is a resolution, please number read, Ken?
Resolution number eighteen, twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the appointment of City Engineer Brian M. Whelan to the District Number Five Integrating Committee for the Ohio Public Works Commission.
Council, we are requesting respectfully that you reappoint Brian to the District Five Integrating Committee. He has served on that for the city for a number of years for us. And there is a little area in section three that if he's unable to make it, I will be appointed as his alternate so that we make sure the City of Brian is covered. Those meetings are in BG, is that correct? Yep.
Three down the year.
Yep. So if you would approve this, we could send this paper off to them. Yes, sir.
Resolution, so.
And I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Item number ten is a negotiation committee appointment.
Yeah, so council, if you recall, at the beginning of the year, there was discussion about the negotiations team and changing that committee. At the time, we did ask that Mr. Betts stay on and finish out the street department. You adopted that at the last meeting, so we do have to renew fire from their first three-year contract, fall, early winter. And I think the discussion that night was that maybe that negotiation committee would switch to Ms. Leatherman and Mr. Kozemplek. But the council was very reasonable and did not want you to not be here when they made that decision. So.
All right.
Everybody but me, my response was.
Put him on.
Yeah, I know.
So if we could have a motion to approve Mary Leatherman and Jim Kozemplek to the city's negotiation team?
I'll move.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
Again, thank you. And again, I know I went over this last meeting, but I appreciate all of the many, many days and hours you put in the last three years, four years.
I don't, it's been a while.
It's been a record breaking year.
Really, I'm just telling Steve that seriously, yeah, it's a lot. But in the same sense, you delve in to detail like no one's business. And you also get to know the folk better, which is also a positive. So there are positives to it, but it's time well spent, but it does have some, especially new ones. These are renewed, so that won't be that much. New ones take a little longer, when people want to start at a 60 to 75% wage increase. And you need to kind of get that down a tad. So thank you both for doing that.
Item number eleven is Fireman's Department Fund, Dependence Fund, sorry, Dependence Fund.
Good evening, once again. This is an annual requirement for us to approve the Volunteer Firemen's Dependence Fund Board. This board is the one that we hope never meets. And I thank you that have agreed to serve on the board if we need it. So I just ask that you approve this so that we can submit to the state.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Follow is the Police Dependence Fund.
And Counsel, similar to the Fire Department, we are asking that you elect the current members of Jim Kozemplek, Richard Hoopie, Chief Ruski, Jeremy Veers, and Jim Leibengood. Again, the board only functions in the event of a line-of-duty death within the Police Department. Also appreciate both of you and your willingness to serve on that, and we hope to never need it.
Yep, I'll move.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Item number thirteen. Annual report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hate being last. I know you're in a hurry to get out of here, so.
So he's going to talk for an hour and twenty-five minutes.
Set the five-minute timer?
Yeah.
I got red marks on it. Poppy Day.
Don't say that, he's been nervous all day.
I understand you have a copy of the annual report already?
Yes.
Okay. So, just quickly, the department has currently, at the time of this report, had seventeen full-time officers, that includes the chief and I. It does not include the dispatch center, which right now we have, well, at the time of the report, it was four. We've lost a couple people since then.
What do you want to start there?
I won't go through all of the names that work for you, we'll be here for a while if I do, if you don't mind. But a quick snapshot of what we have, two hundred and forty-nine car crashes were investigated this year, some of them might have been ours.
Caught that one.
Five hundred and eighty-six traffic citations issued and six hundred and thirty-eight traffic warnings. You'll see in your report that we are down on complete complaints for 2023, but it was, we had a short, because we're short-staffed, the guys aren't running traffic as much, so the traffic citations were down, and the other, the proactive stuff that they were doing are down, because we're reactive more than we are proactive for 2023. Hopefully, that'll change by this year when we hire some more people. For 2023, we hired one full-time dispatcher, would have been Kylie Fanzler, and, I'm sorry, Haley Simpson was the full-time. She has come down here from Canada and married a Toledo police officer, so she wanted to get in the field as well, so she graced us, and she's been phenomenal since, and now has a newborn baby, two weeks old. The part-time dispatcher, Kylie Fanzler, we did hire her, however, she's moved on to something else already. Retirements, full-time dispatcher would have been Connie, she left us, and one school resource officer, which was Stan Einhardt, yeah. He wasn't around long enough for me to learn his name, I apologize. And one patrol officer, Tracy Williamson, that was a big loss as well, I worked with her on many cases for twenty-some years. Bicycle patrol, there's four certified officers, so some total number of hours, this kind of increased for the last year because you guys granted us the e-bike, so we're able to get more miles and more coverage and quicker response. Instead of having to go pedal from one side to the other, we can drive the e-bike and make it to the other side of the city a lot faster, and it's, we're not exhausted by the time we get there. Pastor Michael Elkins, he has been a great asset to us, he stops in very often, provides any support that an officer may need at a time of crisis, but he also contributes in CPR training and participates also with weapon training and down the range. We have a contract right now with Owens Community College, it's, when you incur the cost of sending an officer to different trainings, like in London and all over the state of Ohio, it gets quite costly. Owens has a consortium that we pay a small amount of money, and we're allowed to send as many officers as we can get in the class, and it's one fee, as many officers as we can, when there's quite a few classes that they offer. Brian PD officers received over seventeen hundred hours of training, various topics. You'll see the death investigation, forensic interviews. Forensic interview is a new, not new, it's been around for a while, it's new for us, for the Police Department, it's for the children who have been in a crisis, sexual assault or a major crime.
We have two separate rooms for that, right?
Correct, sir. We just, so we included a forensic interview room, it's what we call a soft interview room, it has a couch and toys for the kids to play with, and now we have trained officers who are trained, who are trained to talk to the children and how, so we don't look like this, and we're not talking like we would an adult. Some of the other trains we've had is the basic SWAT, dynamic vehicle operations to help with our accidents, nothing on that one. K-9 training, bike patrol, so that's about it. Police fleet, so we have thirteen total vehicles, nine marked, four unmarked. Maintenance cost has kind of gone up, it's sixteen thousand, and we've used eight thousand, but these are the guys, these cars are getting driven almost twenty-four hours a day, with the total fuel cost of twenty-nine thousand dollars for the 2023. So our dispatch, you know that we are, have our own dispatch, we also assist county, which is some of the things we talked about with the 911 system. You see that we've had twelve hundred and forty 911 calls, those are called in from Central, they come, they go in direct to Central, and then they call us and direct us out to it. Radio calls and phone calls, forty-one thousand and fifty-five thousand, so you'll see that's kind of the same throughout the last few years. Our OVIs, ninety-five test with the data master, forty-nine were administered by officers of the Brian PD, resulting in thirty-one subjects being charged. We are the, we are the only agency in Williams County that has a data master, in 2023 has the data master, which is what used to do OVIs, and take the breathalyzer tests is what you guys would know it as.
Is it each car?
No, sir. So they would, you would make the arrests, you bring them back to our office, and then you blow in this big machine. So that machine is very old, it's been down more than it's been up, so you'll see in, I guess, the next page, nope, sorry, so it's not up there. Our tests per units have been different versus the machine, so we have to actually use urine and blood tests instead because the machine's been down so much in 2023, which is an additional cost to us.
May I interrupt you?
Yes.
So I'm just going to give you the bad news now that we're just finding out. So we did know that the BAC data master was really, we've been limping it along for a long time. We had purchased an intoxicilizer from another department years ago, prior to me being mayor, there was enough court cases on there that the judge felt that the calibration was not reliable, and he just would not let us use it, because he didn't think that he could ever get a jury to convict someone on an OVI based on these calibration numbers in research. So we've been limping this BAC data master along, which again, the post uses, the Sheriff's Department, all of our local agencies, our smaller villages, we calibrate, we maintain, that machine is crippled. So we are going to have to purchase a new one. Captain Mendez has been doing a great job, and we'll be meeting with the chiefs tomorrow to try to work on some collaboration in that cost. So we will have a report to you in the near future on what that looks like, but that's, it's, the new one is twelve thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
About eight months out, and so.
Is it alcohol?
It is alcohol, so we will have to be using the hospital, and they will send it down to the state, is that correct?
Yeah. We can do the kits within-house, but we have to send the kits down to the State of Ohio's lab to be tested, so when we have time, and when we charge someone, we have a limited amount of time that we have to produce this results, and it's just time ticking away, plus it's an additional cost per kit and per test that we have to incur as well.
And it's still voluntary, right? A person can refuse?
They can, they're looking at a license suspension if they do.
Yeah, it's kind of a.
It's a risky refusal.
From the legal perspective, but.
Yes, sir.
So what I'm prepping you for, and I'm sorry if you aren't okay with me talking to them, but it's the only time I ever get them together so I can have this conversation, that twelve thousand was obviously not something that we budgeted for or were prepared for, so we will probably have to come back to you in some capacity for that, because this, this breathalyzer is essential to the work of all of our officers, and it's something that.
And every police department in Williams County relies on us for that.
Yeah, and we're happy to do that, right? Because we all have certain tools and things that we all help each other out with, and this is one that we've been consistent on over the years.
So those thirty, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
So those thirty-one in the 2023, are those thirty, I'm a little confused, based on the data I've seen.
Yeah.
Are those thirty-one?
So.
Just Brian arrest, are these people that are sent to us?
Those are just, no, just Brian arrest.
Just Brian arrest.
Yes, sir.
So how many breathalyzers do we?
Yeah. That's, I thought that slide.
Ninety-five was what we had done for all departments.
Okay.
And then forty-nine were administered by our officers, with thirty-one being intoxicated and being charged.
Yes, sir.
Because if you start getting into the eighty, ninety range, it's kind of stupid to have a breathalyzer that's not going to be calibrated to the extent that it's going to have the effect, the judicial effect that we, that one would want.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Captain Mendez has done a really good job of doing all the research for this new one, and has already gone to the judge and gotten this one approved, and he's satisfied with the one that we're, the model we're looking at. Would you like me to turn the page, Captain Mendez?
Yes, please.
Thank you for the interruption.
Sorry.
For allowing.
So we have two K-9 officers now, thanks to you guys, thanks to you, I was, we were approved for the extra, for Bain and Robinson to have his own dog, which was from Derschler, I'm sorry. You'll see the numbers there, thirty-six deployments and twenty-eight. Training hours is two hundred and thirty-eight hours, and Bain, because we got him later, and his hours are down. The training consists of two times a month for eight hours. There's a in-county training where they, Officer Sammons has made a group of the local K-9 officers, and they work together, and they go out, and they have established what they do, what kind of training they're going to work on that day. And then they just recently, I know this is supposed to be 2023, but I wanted to let you know, that we just got on with Butler County over in Indiana, so now they're training with even bigger departments and learning a lot of new things as well, so it's.
Both dogs have vests?
I don't know, sir.
I believe so.
I believe so.
They were both donated, I think Bain's came in.
Okay.
We'll check on that.
That's what I wasn't sure.
Society, and so.
I wasn't sure if Bain got his.
We, yeah, we'll double-check on that, but we had gotten the donation for Bain, Tyson had his, and they also, I believe, have a Narcan kit as well.
Yes, they, we have the Narcan kit, yes. So Detective John Raski, who's who you passed downstairs, and I got him in a uniform finally, he's guarding our door. He's assigned to the multi-air narcotics unit, you'll see that he's had a hundred and twenty-three indictments, that's one guy with a hundred and twenty-three indictments, and that's all drug-related. A misdemeanor first degree, the lowest, and felony one, we have seven, which is the highest that you can be charged with. I mean, that's, that's something, for one guy to handle that kind of calls. So what I was talking about earlier, you'll see our call for service for 2023 has gone down. Doing the numbers, I saw that it's related to us being more reactive than proactive.
Gotcha.
And then this is per day, kind of broke down. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about personnel, just because, something that's been in the news that I don't want to be in our news.
Yes, sir.
And that is the, when a police officer is tough to get.
Yes, sir.
It's tough, it's tough to get them for a variety of reasons. When we do get applicants, and they are screened, what do we do if we find that where they came from, they were disciplined and/or let go? What do we, how do we find that out, and what do we do about it?
So in regards to that, the State of Ohio has a, they have updated the Attorney General's website to where we can look you up and see what certificates you have and who you belong to, and we can go and call those agencies. So if your resume isn't accurate to what the state has on you, that's a red flag already. Our backgrounds is, are pretty, pretty intense with what we have. Just a quick, what we do is, we not only check your, everywhere you've lived, we've checked with the law enforcement agency where you live, be it a city and the county, just to see if your name comes up. If an agency, law enforcement agency, obviously, gives us a bad.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, every occupation has bad apples.
Yeah.
I had my social service, for pity's sake, you would think there was, they got in to the social service to do what? To help people.
Yeah.
And I had to fire and actually prosecute two or three for sexual abuse. So every, every occupation has bad apples. I just want to make sure that we have, you answered the question, the Ohio Attorney General's website gives us the information. If we found something up that was a red flag, does that go to, like, Greg? And then if he has questions, does the mayor find out?
The mayor and city attorney.
So, perfect.
And I'm going to go just for some history for you, we do full psychological evaluations on these candidates, too.
That's state-required.
Yes, but some of the smaller villages don't have to do that because they're not in civil service, right?
No, state, no, state requirement is, I believe it's for every agency, you have to get psychologically evaluated.
Okay. In the past, Mr. Betts, and I don't want to talk about anyone, like.
No.
We more than likely will not hire them.
Yeah.
And I know, you know, we go through the staffing thing every couple of years, and quite frankly, today, we're down numbers that we don't want to be down. The department is rising to the occasion and handling it and working overtime and, but we don't want them in a long term like that, because their quality of life at home goes down, right?
Well.
So, but with that being said, we will stay low staff versus putting someone on that is a risk for us, a knowing risk.
I did not like what I heard on Channel Eleven, when a captain of a city very close by was asked, why did you hire this person that did, keep this in, X, Y, Z? And the response was, we are having a hard time finding officers. I don't give two terms, I don't care, I just assumed, thank you. That's exactly where I was going. I just assumed, I know it's not me on the line, but I would just assume that this community have officers that we are proud of and we stand behind, versus, well, we took, we took the best of what we could, and this was it.
And we do, we have officers we're very proud of.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Yep.
I just wanted you to know, that was what my question was, is I did not want to be answering, nor you.
Now, there's a disclaimer in there that people's lives changed and people's behavior changed, and, but we do everything we can to vet and are not looking to just fill shifts. Is that reasonable enough?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
No, I appreciate it, thank you, very good.
Good job, Captain Mendez.
Thank you.
Surprise, it's the first year you get to do the annual report for the whole department.
Well, Ruski's in trouble.
Totally grounded.
I got completely amended, although I had you going on the room, Eric, do you have anything?
So I just wanted to report to you, obviously, you know that we have a city pin, I'm wearing mine tonight, you all have those. On the rare occasion, someone will reach out to me for some really cool thing they're doing and want to pass out these type of city pins to kind of, you know, a little hometown pride to the event they're going to. So last week, I got a call from Lynn Wieland, who's a former council member, on behalf of the Miller family, and Alex Miller is traveling to Australia for Special Olympics.
Yes.
For a really, really awesome event, and so I dropped off about twenty-two pins to him. Have the thank you note, it was dropped off at my house and I forgot to bring it, but I did want to let you know that we are very proud to support Alex, and we hope he has an amazing experience, and we certainly know he will represent this community really well, as he always does. So also, really would like to thank Ben and Brian and the foundation on Lincoln Park and all of the work that has gone into that. I got so giddy when I came back from DC, part of the park is already up, and every day, a little more goes up, so it's pretty cool to watch. I know that there are kids in this community that are watching it go up that cannot wait. I talked to one of the kids at our Brian Autistic School the other day, and she was like, hey, Mayor Schlade, how's our park coming? You know, so I actually saw her dad, and I said, hey, the equipment was delivered, and they've got a few things up. So I think they're driving by every day to check the progress, and she's very excited, so great highlight for that park and great use of that. And again, we always thank the school, too, for donating that property for the public purpose. Captain Mendez, well done tonight, thank you. And I, and BPA, and I know Karen Lefton, Derek, thanks for coming, and I just am so excited to see you tomorrow night. Let's keep it short, I gotta try to get the girls' basketball game on the radio. I, that's.
We're live streaming.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah.
That's another thing I just want to say, and it leads back to the park conversation.[1763.86] Let's keep it short, I gotta try to get the girls' basketball game on the radio. Um, I, that's a...
We're in a live streaming.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yep.
Um, that's another thing I just want to say, um, and it leads back to the park conversation. Uh, the city has had a long history of supporting all of our athletics and a lot of our kids and putting activities in our park and I cannot compliment our park department enough for all of the fields they ready every day, for all of the work they put in on the offseason and for everything they do for the, in the pool and for these young athletes from age two or three up and even into high school. Um, just a big support of our, our student athletes and now our artists with the AmpliTheater, um, which is really cool. But with that, we've had a lot of kids going to state, doing well at state. We're sending off a wrestler as well and potentially hopefully a girls' basketball team will get through districts, right? We'll see, we're going to cross our fingers and hope.
Let's get through tomorrow for...
Um, so we have a big game tomorrow night and, um, we just want to wish all of those students at Brian City Schools, um, good luck. And, um, Ben's been doing awesome and putting their pictures on our Center Street board. Um, so if you're driving by and you see some kids on there, it's likely they're making some records and, and breaking them, so it's been pretty cool to watch. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I don't have anything to add.
Brian?
Nothing further.
Chief?
Nope.
Captain?
Go where?
Tyson?
Go where?
Ben?
He does. He's going to talk longer than me too.
And I'm so glad Derek and the BMU people are still here. Um, so a couple of weeks ago, back to the Lincoln Park, um, we had two semis show up on a Friday morning, um, jam-packed with all the equipment. And if it weren't for the BMU guys, um, John Caperton, Gus Halbert, Stuart Martin, Justin Maud Fogel, um, and Derek allowing them to help us, we, we might still be down there unloading these semis. Um, but they allowed us to go back to their shop, they have a ramp. The guy, um, went right in, drove right into the trailer, unloaded everything and then Gus and Stuart helped us get it down to the site. So, um, I just want to take a chance to thank them and their staff for what they do to help us, um, continue to move in the right direction. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wait till you get available.
It's all right. We'll take them back.
Eric and BBA? No. Newspapers? Please. John?
Oh, look out. Um, yeah, I wanted to thank the Brian Area Foundation and the community for the, uh, their support for the, um, park, the Lincoln Park restroom and Lincoln Park period. Uh, need to add the, um, BMU folk to that, I'm very, that's great, actually, cooperation. Um, all those that, uh, that are doing the volunteer for the, which I agree, I hope we never have to use firemen and the police, um, dependent fund, uh, including our, um, Rick, Russ, Greg, and I think so, Jim, Greg, Jeremy, Jim Leibengood. So thank all of those folks for doing that. Uh, also like to thank Mary and Jim, uh, for being on the negotiating team. Uh, they will do well, um, and, uh, probably better than I and that's a good thing too. Um, and the last one is congratulations, as the mayor said, to all the winter teams and athletes. Um, and I can't get into the bowling because I don't know enough of the bowling and the swimming and the diving and the wrestling. I think Marley Yoder, I believe, is going to state.
Yep.
Um, but I, I do know the girls' basketball team and... Last Saturday when I, uh, took them to the district final game, and it was March second. And March second is, uh, two thousand and seven is when, uh, David was, uh, killed in the motor coach crash. These girls weren't even born. They weren't even born. Some, maybe one years old, two or three of them maybe. And they took the court. With David, with David's initials and his number on their shoes. They have been, are, and always will be winners. And I mean that from a human perspective, not an athletic perspective. They are very caring, very smart, very competitive, and they play with a passion that I admire. So I just want to have a shout-out to them. Uh, it meant a lot to our family, uh, the worst day of our lives and they made it better. And that's very difficult to do for the Betts family on March second. That's it.
Steve?
Um, very much so looking forward to seeing the Lincoln Park project come together and just so proud of all those who have put in time and energy and money into this project. It was, Ben, it was, yeah, it was neat to drive by the other day and I go, oh, wow, they're getting stuff up and things are coming together, so, yeah, that, that is really exciting. I can imagine that the kids, I mean, I'm old and I think it's exciting, so, uh, they've, it's got to be the same way that, in their world too, so that, you know, looking forward to seeing this and coming into place. Captain Mendez, thank you very much for the report. Appreciated it. Um, I will have to ask the chief, like, hey, but thank you. And then I, I've mentioned this before and I'll mention it again, it is, it is the most incredible thing though, the, all the collaboration that you hear and you see and it's talked about, um, just people, the different departments coming together. It's, it's no, no, this is our type thing, no, you can't touch it, or no, that's yours, you rely on it, type thing. The amount of collaboration that you see amongst all the different departments and the heads and everything else that is going on, it's just, it's so amazing and it's so neat to hear about on a regular basis and I'm very appreciative of it. Um, I don't know if people in Brian realize how much is done, um, when it comes to collaboration, but wow, there's a lot.
You know, the hope is that they don't notice because that means we're all doing what we need to do. That's always our goal.
Yeah, it's true. And then Marley Yoder, we're doing a state send-off at twelve forty-five on Thursday for her. Um, and then we've got, you know, our ladies leaving tomorrow for Mansfield and just wishing all of our athletes or winter athletes that are still competing, good luck. And believe it or not, uh, if I'm not mistaken, next week is our first spring sport scrimmage.
Yeah, in the snow, probably. Sorry, Tyson, I didn't mean to use the S-word on council meeting. I said snow paper, like I didn't, just to clarify.
Greg?
Oh, um, most of what I, I have has been mentioned, but, uh, I want to thank Jim and Mary for their willingness to, uh, be on the negotiations team there. Um, and thank you to Captain Mendez for his presentation, it was very enlightening. Um, Lincoln Park, uh, it was very exciting to drive by there and I, I didn't realize that they were starting and all this stuff is laid out there and they're hard at work and it's, uh, it's pretty neat and I'm looking forward to the, uh, restroom facilities, which will be a great addition to that, that whole plan and it's, it's going to be very nice, very nice. And thank you for all the work that you've done, Ben, on that. Um, oh, and thank you to the Brian Area Foundation for their generous donation too with all of that. Um, I'm kind of like John in that I don't know all of the, uh, sports facilities and unfortunately I don't get an opportunity, uh, to get to know the kids, but, uh, good luck to all of, uh, the Brian, uh, school students that are still competing, but, um, and especially, uh, Marley Yoder and, uh, and she's going off to, she's what, number one, uh, in the state? That's something. That is something. Um, but I watched the game, um, this last week, um, and one thing that I came away from with these girls that are, that are competing for high honors in, in basketball is that, man, they are tough. And, uh, I, they, they just amaze me at their, their abilities, their teamwork and, uh, I've done a little research into Granville and we can beat them. And so I wish them all of the luck in the world and, uh, I don't think they're going to need it. I think that they will do this and, uh, I look forward to, uh, seeing them push on through. So, uh, good luck to them and, uh, that's all that I have.
I really can't add anything. Captain Mendez, thank you. Uh, we, I am extremely proud of our police department. We came a long way and you guys are doing an absolutely fantastic job.
Thank you, sir.
Lincoln Park looks great. Keep it up. Uh, and good luck to all the Brian athletes. That's all I got.
Um, I'm just going to thank all of the partners. You guys are fabulous. You work together. Um, thank you, Captain Mendez. It's great to see, I wanted to say this, but I didn't say it. I'd like to be back, there's really no turnover, because there isn't, it's just retirement.
Yep.
So, that's a plus not to have that other turnover. So, great job, what you and, um, Captain, or Chief Ruski are doing.
Yep.
Um, again, thank, thank all the partners. Again, I really appreciate your, your reports. Um, with that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Exactly.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.